Reporter, please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Oingier.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator David Henshaw.
Here.
If you had a chance to approve the minutes, we'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May 14th.
I second.
All right, if you have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2019, it's been properly seconded, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor, I have none. Any of the aldermen have any?
Maybe the time I told you before, James Drive, Jamie said he didn't care. I know it sounds like a broken record, but every week or every time we meet for alderman stuff, and I told you, I know I speak for all the aldermen and all the women, that about the parks and wreck, what they're doing, what the fire department's doing, the police department's done, the street department, you'd have to be here to understand or see what goes on. And I'm very well aware of it. I'm gonna comment Mark Crawford. I think he pepped up a little bit on getting some things done. And I think Chief Schultz is working with him, helping, just wanted to tell everybody thank you. And that comes from all of us. So I see a lot of things going on in our city.
Anyone else? Okay. Communications from City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have this month is just to remind everyone and invite everyone to the fifth annual Rhythm on the River Concert Series that we are co-sponsoring again this year with the Chamber of Commerce. The first one will be this Thursday, beginning at 7:00. And it will be a local band, Marshall Law. And then on June the 27th, we'll be having Jigsaw Jane, who I think has came to and performed at each of the concerts every summer that we've had. And so they're calling for good weather this Thursday. Supposed to be sunny and not too hot, in the 70s. So it ought to be perfect concert weather to come and sit out under the stars and listen to a little music. So hopefully, everybody will come and participate. That's all we got.
Okay. Short and sweet. No appointment of boards, commissions, or committees that I'm aware of. So we'll move on. Reports from Town and Preservation Alliance.
A reconstruction meeting in the morning with reconstructions who want, who's bidly accepted. And then I'll know more after that. I don't know timeline, but when they're gonna start.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. That makes Carlene very happy. All right. Old business, unfinished business. Consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2019-03, budget amendment for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2018-2019.
And Mayor Oliver, you captured that ordinance into the record. And of course, this will be the second reading. It's ordinance 2019-03, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2018-2019.
We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the ordinance, the second reading of ordinance number 2019-03, budget amendment for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2018-2019. It's been properly seconded, approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, consideration of first reading of ordinance 2019-04, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2019-04, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2018-2019 for Newport Grammar School. This would be the second reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve. Or we need a motion on the board, I'm sorry. We got a, we have a motion.
You made a motion.
Go ahead.
No, no, I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear you either. All right. We have a motion by Coach Profit. Been seconded by Bobby. We will, it's on the board now. Will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Can I just, most, please vote. Sorry, I already voted. I'm, my bad, I'm getting a little confused up here between these two guys. Uh, Profit's seconded and approved. It's been, it's been approved, motion carried. All right. Item C, consideration of first reading of ordinance 20, number 2019-05, city of Newport adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
And that's ordinance number 2019-05, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. This would be the second reading.
Do we need a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of second reading of ordinance 20, number 2019-05, city of Newport adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. It's been properly seconded. Are there questions? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, new business. A, consideration of resolution number 2019-04, recommending the issuance and sale of not to exceed $65 million in aggregate principal amount of electric system revenue bonds, series 2019, and recommending the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of said bonds.
I'll thank you. I don't have much to say, but there are some folks that will address the resolution, give you a description, answer any questions. But basically, a short, a short history here. January of 2017, we went to our board of directors and asked for approval of our business plan. And it was approved. We then came to city council, asked for approval of our business plan, and it was approved. Two consecutive times, we came back asking for bond anticipation notes so we could get started with the work. And we got approval from both our board and city council. That happened twice. And now we're ready to roll both of those temporary bond anticipation notes into one bond and finish out the work for a request amount of $65 million. Now, that's easy for me to say. Here's the fellows that can explain it to you. Our director of finance and accounting is Michael Wilford. He'll, he'll address some of the things for you. And then Scott Gibson is here to also talk about the details of the resolution and answer questions.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. The original estimation cost for the project from Magellan, which was our consulting firm, and what was approved through city council and through our board, as Glenn said, was $83.7 million. The project, to date, the build-out of the project is ahead of schedule. Through value engineering and system design, we've been able to reduce that estimated completion amount. Estimating final construction costs, the reason we come to you today, to estimate those final construction costs and to finance long-term allows us to take advantage of very favorable rates for bonds right now. Scott can give you more of an idea about how favorable those are. But it's very favorable for that. And plus, we save on closing fees by estimating out in the future, say, how much we're gonna need. What this bond resolution will do, like Glenn said, it'll retire the bank anticipation notes or the bond anticipation notes of $14.5 million and $22.5 million. It'll also prove, allow us to have another $27 million to finish out the rest of the project. That's a total of $65 million, if you do the quick math on that. The final maturity, the details of the bond, the final maturity of this is 2047, which is 30 years from the initial ban that we approved. Annual debt service is $3.9 million. Interest payments only up until 2023. That's all we're gonna pay, we're not gonna pay the principal. However, starting in March 1st, 2027 or 2028, whichever the bond listing allows, we will be allowed to pay the note off early in that timeframe.
Michael did a great job there. This resolution before you is for $65 million. I'm happy to answer any technical questions you may have. I will point out on the back of the resolution, there's a proposed amortization schedule that we're looking at, that you can reference. It should be on the back there. The rates as of today and based on the schedule are a little less than 3.5%. So it's a great time to be going to market. The timing of this, if you approve this tonight, we will have a rating call with Moody's Investor Service as soon as next week. And hopefully get the rating shortly thereafter and be ready to go out and permanently finance this, this funding to, like Michael said, retire the $37 million with the debt you currently have outstanding. You can permanently finance it and provide the system with approximately $27 million more to finish the build-out. Hopefully, by the end of June, first, well, second week of July, July 4th is in the first week. So that's, we have to work around that holiday. But we will, we will be moving forward at a fairly recent, or very, very soon to get this done. So that is an over, a broad overview. If you have any specific questions, please let me know. If not, we, we can continue to move forward.
Scott, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
How low, how much lower are the rates compared to what they were originally?
Actually, that's a really good question. You know, we started this process. We started down the path a while back, as Glenn was saying. And we looked at two potential financing options, the traditional bond market like this. We also looked at a government program that was out there. These rates were, we were projecting rates close to 4% when we started this, in this market. And the government program was also in the same ballpark figure. And so rates have actually come down since January. So the timing could not have been better. Like I said, we should be sub 3.5% on this when we, when we sell these bonds. And so in the long run, you will end up saving some money on the, on the financing cost because of the timing and where rates are today. So I would say we're, like I said, we were 4% approximately, and we're gonna be sub 3.5%. So I mean, we've saved at least a half a percent, if not more.
I think maybe the question you were asking was, what was the interest rate for dealing with the USDA or US loan? Is that correct?
Based on the original projections for the first $37 million, the rates we were, we were, the two bonds, two bands we're retiring, what rate were they?
Those are, they're a little bit less than 3%. But that being said, they were only good for a two-year period.
Right.
This will be financing 28 years out. So we will be locking in, like I said, sub 3.5%. So a little bit higher rate than where you are today. But obviously, this will be permanent financing over a 28-year period versus just a two. So in the scheme of things, this is a much better rate for the length of time that we are financing, so.
You said we would be locked in.
Yeah, this, this is traditional fixed-rate debt. So once we get these bonds sold here in the next three weeks, four weeks, whatever it may be, we will be done. You will have those rates. Those rates will be good for 28 years. They will never go up. You will be able to prepay them at some point. And we may, we'll see, have an opportunity at some point in the future, maybe to refinance them only for savings. Obviously, we would only do that if we could save some money, so.
I think in, in the resolution, as I was reading through it earlier, indicated that the maturity rate, or time, would be in 49, 2049.
The resolution does allow to 2049. The board, and based on some state law issues, we have decided to not go past 2047. So the resolution is permissive in that it allows a maximum up to 65, up to 2049. When it's all said and done, we'll probably be at $65 million, and we will only go to 2047. So it'll be a, it'll be 30 years from the, as Michael mentioned, from when we first did the 2017 bond anticipation note. So you have approved those previous bond anticipation notes, but those were always designed just to be temporary financing to get the project started until we came back to this resolution, which will be, this resolution you're adopting will be your master resolution. If we ever have another bond issue in the future for the electric system, this resolution will govern. It is the latest and greatest that Bass Barry and Sims has drafted, that is your bond attorney. And I think we're in good shape to move forward.
My last question then is probably more suited for Glenn, but you may be able to answer too, Scott. Based on the numbers of the $65 million, how confident are we that this will, we can build out the rest of the project for this, for that amount?
That's the current estimate, based on what we know today. Of course, anything that happened in the future. But that's, that's what we think the cost is or less. I think we're averaging that $65 million. Obviously, we've already gone down from $83 million to $65.
Right.
So we'll keep, we'll keep doing the value engineering, keep trying to find ways to cut costs. I think we will.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there was some substation work and some other things that has been out of this money too. So all $65 million is not for the spark grid system. There's been some, some poles, lines, transformer, infrastructure, or substation improvements that were part of this. So, and these bonds are payable from the electric system. And so this, this money is going to be only, used only for electric system improvements. Now, electric system basically means we can stream fiber across wherever it may be and get fiber to the electric meter. And that good chuckling, this money is going for that in the backbone to support that. But the, the internet cable system, this money is not necessarily being used for stuff like a cable box. So that's, that's coming from other sources. Just to clarify that.
Have any other questions from the board? All right. Well, if you're, if we don't have any other questions, we'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion. We recommend insurance and sale.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve a consideration of resolution number 2019-04, recommending the issuance and sale of not exceed $65 million in aggregate principal amount of electric system revenue bonds, series 2019, and recommending the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of said bonds. We have the motions on the board. It's been properly seconded. Are there any other questions?
Should also do a roll call vote on this, please.
Okay. If no other questions, then we'll take the vote. Approved by a normal sign of aye.
We need a roll call.
Okay, we have a roll call, roll call vote. I'm sorry.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Oingier.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes. Glad to see the people, the board from Newport Utilities here tonight. I'm glad to see y'all here in the grammar school representation. Glad to have y'all.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we have to announce that that's been approved. All right, item B, consideration of allowing a city of Newport employee to use accumulated early retirement time.
Mayor, we have an employee of the street department who has a serious illness. He has been out for some time, and he has exhausted all his leave time, other than his accumulated early retirement time or service credit time. And he has written a letter to Mr. Hicks requesting access to his sick time. And Mr. Hicks has, you have in your packet a copy of the letters where he has recommended that we allow him to do that. That can only be done by board approval. And he does meet all the criteria for, for access in that sick time.
You satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, you're all satisfied with that.
Okay. Need a motion.
Got a motion.
Do you have a, have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion on the board to, for consideration of allowing a city of Newport employee to use accumulated early retirement time. It's been properly seconded. Any questions? If not, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
I'm sure he'll appreciate it. He, he's been a loyal employee, and we need to take care of him.
Item C, consideration of certificate of compliance for a liquor store, West End Package Store.
As you all know, when these applications are turned into the city, the city has a process for doing background checks. And those are always forwarded to me. And I just wanted to let you all know that I've had the good fortune to know Mitch about real well about 30 years ago when we opposed each other in Little League football as, as coaches and directors of programs. And I've known him, and he's very active in his community, as well as the, as the bank that he's associated with. And I just wanted to stand up and let you all know that that's one of those times that vetting someone wasn't very hard, because I know him already and have had a good relationship with him, both professionally and as well as personally in Little League sports and his other involvement in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you again for your time. My name is Grayson Schlepperwell. I'm an attorney at Wolf McLean. As I may have mentioned previously, this is an existing business. We're not adding another retail package store to town. It's at the same location, which we believe is in compliance with all applicable setbacks and other requirements related to schools and churches and things like that. And as the chief just testified or presented, Mitch and Mac are upstanding members of the community. And I think they'd be a valuable addition to the management of this store. And we respectfully request that this certificate be granted.
Mark, do you like to add anything? Would you like to add anything?
Oh, you're asking me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Well, only that the liquor store isn't existing. It's a location. Even though there's a church on down the road from there. That shouldn't be an issue with this transfer of ownership, from one business owner to the next.
Okay. All right. Need a motion.
I make a motion to do the certificate.
You second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Excuse me. We have consideration of certificate of compliance for a liquor store, West End Package Store. It has been properly seconded. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All, did we, did we have, how many ayes did we get? Did we have one, two, three, four?
You got four of them.
You got four, okay. All right. That motion has been, has been approved. We've got, we've got one abstain, you abstained? Did you abstain?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, all right. Any, any opposition, I'm sorry, any no's? One abstention. All right, it's been properly, it's been approved. Item D, discussion of changing street names for new businesses. Alderman Mike Hansel.
Okay, folks, well, I'm, I'm not looking for a direct resolution to this tonight, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I was just made aware that Tevet had left not too very long ago. And we recently voted to change that name. I think when a company comes in, the street name should be what it is. I don't know how many people are actually business-wise, our own Tevet Drive, or Tevet Drive, however you pronounce it. If there are other businesses down there and this company is no longer there, it's, that name was changed basically just to suit the needs of that one company. And if they're no longer there, they weren't here hardly a year. I don't know what the problem was as to why they left. But they are gone, and the street name is what it is. So I think that's something we need to give some discretion to in the future, as to about when we change these street names. Because if there are other businesses down there, there are things that are gonna be affected as far as costs, like address, phone, electric utilities, banking accounts, credit cards, and other, just simple stationery. Those things have to be changed. And that's a cost that's gonna be incumbent upon those people that are on, if there are, I'm not sure how many businesses are down there. There may not be any. But I don't think we should just randomly change the name of the business, or the name of the street just to certain individual business in the future. And like I say, I'm not sure exactly as to why they left. And that's gonna, let me open up another can of stuff.
What road was it on? I didn't hear what, which one is it?
Tevet.
I don't know where it is. What is it? It's already gone. It's gone. It's gone. It's gone.
Was that street down in the industrial park?
In the industrial park, yeah.
Okay.
And I also noticed one of our local news media outlets on their Facebook page, I'm not gonna call them out on it, but they put that three major businesses were leaving the city of Newport. And that's true. That's Save-A-Lot.
Fred's.
Fred's. And Sagebrush. Sagebrush has more or less sold the property over and out. To their credit, they did say that other companies are coming in. But that, Facebook is a double-edged sword. It's a good communications tool, but it also weapons up a lot of criticism, unnecessary criticism sometimes. And it just allows people to say whatever they want to say. I hear, and everybody, anybody knows me, knows I like a good conspiracy theory. But there's no conspiracy between the city or county to keep businesses from leaving or staying here. Unfortunately, these businesses that left, what that seems to me to be is some sort of corporate decision. And unfortunately, they were located in Newport. And it didn't take me five minutes of research on the internet to find out these were problems that were going on in at least three or four different states that happened to have these same businesses. So it's not a thing of why don't they want to stay in Newport? A lot of times, like I say, it's just a corporate decision and they decide to close, and they decide to close shops, so.
Fred closed down about 17 stores, by my understanding.
In several, in several states.
Wasn't just here.
Yeah. So like I said, people kinda wanna criticize their leaders, you know, and we're here for that. here for that, we can take, we can take the criticism when it's, when it's due, but I would just ask in the future that the media do their due diligence and tell the whole side of the story. Like I said, it took me less than five minutes to find out there's a little more to the story than has been told. So getting that off my chest, and the Tevet Drive, like I said, I'm not looking for any type of resolution tonight, but I think that's something that we do need to consider in the future. I don't know if that should come from EDC or the planning, or with Gary Carver's office or from the Newport Planning Commission, but if it's something that we want to change for a business in the future, we might look at something that's employing like 350 to 400 people before we just, you know, willy-nilly make a decision to change the street based on a company. For instance, last instance, it employed less than 10 people.
Well, I was just probably putting something behind it. There's four fueling stations for campers and stuff. I've seen them, they've got one over there like going towards Marston stuff. It's, it's not about all these big trucks, I don't like coming off the road, most of them are smaller campers and stuff, but there's something at least coming back.
It's not congested like everybody's going to be afraid. There it's not.
No, that's what I heard, it's not, it's just a mini fueling station.
Yeah, but at least it's a good use of the property too.
Right, right, that's tax.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Hansel. Would you like any, any other questions? Like to add anything?
I believe I got that off my chest.
Okay. All right. You have, next item is bids purchasing expenses, consideration of bids for the renovation of the police department.
Mayor, when we opened, and you have copies under your packets, when we opened the bids last week on this project, they all came in over bid, or over budget, and what was discussed at that meeting, at the bid opening, the architect said that if need be, that we could approve whichever bid you all would choose, and then we could work towards cutting the project back until it was on budget. And so I spoke with Mr. Hurst, and he said that it was his opinion that it would be proper if we chose to accept, if you all chose to accept the low bid with that stipulation, and that would be my recommendation, that we not put more money into it, that we cut back on the scope and get the project down within the budget.
Okay.
And if they cannot, then we would not move forward, but, but I'm, but I agree with the architect, he was confident we could scale that back and get it down to budget if need be by taking some things out that we were going to do, and either do them at a later date or see if we could do some of it ourselves perhaps, but either way, I'm not for putting more money into it, I'm for doing it on budget.
Okay, would you state for the record what the original budget was, James?
It's 170?
175.
175.
And the low bid was?
190.
190, okay.
But now, part of that 175 has been spent on the architect, so what about 6?
It's been sitting out of operations, so that now still exists.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, questions? Need a motion for consideration of bids for the renovation of the police department, stipulating that it would not go over the stated budget amount.
I make a motion to do that.
Accept the low bid.
Accept the low bid.
Accept the low bid.
I'll second it.
All right, most on the board to accept the low bid for consideration of bids for the renovation of the police department, and it's been properly seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, approve by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Certainly.
Hello, I'm wearing shoes, I've been to the podium, but I just want to tell you all, on behalf of my guys and girls, ladies, I truly appreciate you all supporting this. I've worked in that building since 1987. I'm soon to have my 32nd anniversary of the police department, and I see places that I saw when I came there, there are divots and walls that were there when I came, and we've had the opportunity to get small things done, but you know, we live there. My guys that work patrol are there 12 hours a day, half of the year, and we're in and out there all hours of the night, and we bring people from all over, even all over the country, and we have the opportunity with your all's support in this thing to have a place not only that we can be proud of and enjoy, but we can also show off when someone comes in, and I'll give you an example of our staircase, we recovered that two years ago, and I got more comments about our staircase being a beautiful piece than any of the bad stuff that we've seen for 37 years, the holes and walls and painted paneling, and I just truly appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to move forward to this and have the place that we could represent Newport well, and we can also feel comfortable in the place that we basically call home half of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Appreciate your job, y'all, Dave.
Item B, consideration of bids for a truck for the street department.
Yes, we put out a bid for a truck for the street department, and we only received one bid back, and it came back from Venture Trucks, and Roger Green, my mechanic, and I went over to Venture Trucking and drove the truck, inspected it, and we think it'll do what we needed to do.
It's a little heavy duty in what you've been having in.
Yes. It's your truck, and we're replacing one, a '97, and I already have the money in the budget, and just asking you all approval that I use that purchase right.
I make a motion to approve to get the truck.
What was the low bid on that truck?
It was 8,300.
Okay, well, it's only one bid, so I guess it doesn't matter to you. I thought I heard a, a motion to approve.
I'd love to.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have motion on the board to approve the consideration of bids for a truck for the street department for a low bid of 8,300 dollars. It's been properly seconded. Are there any other questions? If not, will approve by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you, man.
Thank you for your job, Mr. Lee. Thank you.
Comments from citizens?
I'd like to just come before you and announce that we have our senior search directories out and about, and if you haven't got one, I carry a new one in here, please pick up one, I have about 5,000 things to get rid of, and they're stacked up in our office, so please help me out, and if you know of anyone that might want one or need one, please take it with you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
How old do you have to be to get one of those?
You're already got to.
I'm a master.
I walked into that one.
Yeah, you did.
I think Rob had something he wanted to say there.
Good evening, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity. I am Rob Watkins, I'm a disabled veteran, a member of the different organizations in this county, and about a year ago, I got with Arts Capes, and we applied for a small grant because they, they had, they were going in connection with the Tennessee Department of Veterans Services, the Tennessee Arts Council itself, and it was to encourage communities to honor their veterans and to get these veterans organizations a little bit more into the arts. Luckily, I've got a degree in art, for whatever good that's been using, but I'd like to take this time to tell you a little bit about that project. We were given the monies also to do the military art and artifacts exhibit we had in November, and so we used a little bit of money for them, but we were saving it for this, because the mural on this wall is going to be at the DAV chapter, the mural right now is six foot eight inches tall, about 25 foot long. We've had suggestions for what was the content of it from the high school art students, we had over 60 renderings of drawings that they'd like to have, and the center point of this is that we may not know them all, but we should honor them all, and that is the center point of this. We have Ms. Amison from the high school, art teacher who recently won District One Congressional Art Teacher of the Year, by the way, she's come in and we have a mural header with an eagle that right now has a 14-foot wingspan. It's, it's really breathtaking. So we'll be working on the rest of this, but I'd like to invite all of you, come up the 4th of July at 10 o'clock in the morning, we will have it inside, the program itself, and then we'll go outside to unveil it, so if it's, if it's hot that time of the morning, we'll have other things out there, planning on having some food and fun, maybe some horseshoes and cornhole and maybe some music, so it should be a fun morning, so before you all go out for the afternoon and, and the fireworks in the evening, please stop by and see us, and if you don't make it for that, you must at some point afterwards stop by and see this thing, because it's going to be something that this, this city should be very proud of. So thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I'd like to say thank you to Alderman, Steve Smith too, he's trying to help get you ramp up the office up there on Pine Street. Appreciate that, Steve.
We're after it, we'll hopefully get, we'll have it for the 4th, if I have to do it myself.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments from citizens? Hearing none, we have the next item on the agenda is for a jury.
Make a motion with Aaron.
I think we have a motion and a second, so.
Thank you, chief.